Morning, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, would you read the first item?
The Commissioner's Office will report on the financials from February 20th, 2014. Resolution number 14-032, as approved by the county administrator pursuant to the motion approved January 16, 2014, to authorize the county administrator to execute in the case of a lack of form Commissioner's hand or obsession as canceled on a regular financial day or on a day when financials need to be approved via required approvals for county financials on behalf of the board during the year 2014 as authorized by ORC 305.30.
Yeah, yes. Financials last week on the 20th include revenue certifications for the court technology and county engineer building funds, appropriation transfer from the contingency account and return appropriations to the clerk of courts office for reimbursements deposited in the general fund, supplemental appropriations for Department on Aging and Sheriff's 911, funds for changes approved as part of the budget hearing process, cash transfers out of the general fund for portions of 2014 funding for the building improvement fund, the youth center, the third quarter state fiscal year to 2014 GFS mandated share, the CASA program, volunteer guardianship in the soil and water conservation district, travel requests for the common police court and Department of Job and Family Services. Vouchers included a payment to Newberry Country Meats for a partial disbursement of local revolving loan from the Office of Community Economic Development in an amount of $3,500, a payment to Business Smarts for the purchase of eight HP workstations for the treasurer's office in the amount of $7,774.08, and a payment to Ider Source Corp. for software patches and installation services for the network conversion to IP version six for the auditor's office. Now, the amount was a flat fee of $60,000. We looked into that. It's a large number, it's a round number. It turns out, I got a summary of work from Steve Decatur. The total billable work was 66,700 and change, it's truncated off on here. So there's 66,7 worth of work done, but they had agreed to not exceed a $60,000.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
No, you don't have to.
And I have no motion to make?
Yeah, I'm just reporting.
Okay, accepted.
Number two.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of February 13, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 14-033, itemizing the financials for the meeting of February 20, 2014.
Financials today include a revenue certification for the water resources Thompson Woods Water Treatment Plant project, cash transfer out of the general fund for a portion of the 2014 funding for court technology, travel requests for the Department of Job and Family Services.
I'll make a motion to have that.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Blake, before we go on, I would just like to mention, at our Noawaka meeting, we're concerned about the way they're looking at the roads for, to get the roads, the money for the federal government for, at the level that the roads need to be paved. Right now, our roads are in such great condition, and we need to have that standard put up higher so that we do get funding. Additionally, one of the things they want to do is take, get money two years in advance before the money comes in, and I don't think that that's a good idea. I, I'm gonna try and, I'll cut this off at the executive meeting, that's where most of, before it ever gets to the, to the big meeting. The problem is, you know, if we're, if we're going after money before it's even allocated to us, it's like, we're going after money, we don't even know if it's there yet, and I think that's only going to build more and more debt on something that we don't even have yet. So, my, my feeling is, you know, with the board's approval, I would like to, I, I don't know if a resolution, you know, resolution in favor of having the standards set so that they do accommodate Joga County in a way that we will get our money for our roads, because, let's face it, the roads in Joga County are in far better condition than they are anywhere else. And when we try to get road money, you know, when they set the standards, say, at 70 or 60, well, our roads, I don't think ever get that bad. Would you say our roads ever get that bad? No, I don't think so. So, we want them to follow a certain set of standards and principles that is not gonna cut us out, because if we aren't, if we don't get our money, there's no point in us being there.
Mary, if you don't mind me chiming in against Ralph's ultimate, I sit on the-
You were there too.
I sit on the policy committee.
Yes.
Okay, and I raised this issue with them. There's actually two elements to it.
There's two elements.
So, let me, let me update the-
Excuse me, Mary and Skip, we're on a timeframe with issue five.
Oh, okay.
And, and if we could continue this discussion after this-
Okay.
-executive session, because of the fact that the consul has to leave by 10:30.
That sounds good. Ma'am, I would like to raise this issue, those two Noak issues I was planning on raising with the board in any case.
That's, that's fine, if we can do it, if we can do it after the executive session, we can talk all you want, but we have one item here, and then we have to enter into executive session, again, by a timeframe from the prosecutor's office.
That's fine.
Okay, number four.
Hi, sorry, Blake. I'm here to ask for permission to grant the right to advertise and hold a public hearing for a grant that we're applying for through ODOT for specialized transportation. That's for an MB1 van that we're interested in purchasing.
Oh.
It's a handicap.
It's a van.
It's a specialized van for accommodating handicapped individuals.
The cost of the van is approximately $45,000. So if we get this grant, they cover 80% of that, so we'd only have to come up with $9,000 in match money, as opposed to $45,000.
All right, thank you.
Kristi.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold a public hearing regarding application to the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT 2014 Specialized Transportation Program grant to be held Thursday, March 13, 2014, at 10:10 a.m. Notice of this public hearing will be advertised on February 27, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Number five, or you want me to do it?
Let's do them individually, but-
Okay, we vote on both these, individual.
Correct. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22G8 to consider confidential information related to negotiations with a political subdivision, respecting requests for economic development assistance under ORC Chapters 5709.40.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session as it is necessary to protect the possible expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
We're gonna enter into executive session, and I would like Laura, Jim Flays-
And Heidi.
Uh, Heidi, where she left her-
And I'll get her.
Okay, and then the, we'll be back.
Pause this.
Promise.
Long time?
Nah, it shouldn't be too long.
So.
Let the record show that we entered back into open session at 10:28. And we have a-
Public hearing.
Public hearing at 10:30, so. Wanna wait the two minutes, or just? Oh, yeah, Anita, or, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, bring it up before the minute goes by.
Yeah.
Hey, Kristen?
Oh, can I do mine first?
Whatever.
We gotta wait till 7:30 on the numbers.
We could do number seven first, if you would like.
Yeah, do seven.
We'll do seven. If you can get it done in a minute.
I, you'll try. Two minutes.
So much pressure. Do you have a look to the ConStar relief fund for the sidewalk improvements project for the fairgrounds? This is the last piece of new work, or, you know, we can go active it.
You wanna read that?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the Vice President of the Board to execute the State of Ohio Development Services Agency Office of Community Development request for relief of funds, RROF, and certification for federally funded state projects for community development black grant, CDBG, grant number B-F-13-1AZ-1, in regards to sidewalk improvements at the Joga County Fairgrounds.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive the, the ad in the paper regarding the reading of the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Ah, here we are again, another year, another bunch of grants that we could possibly apply for, and with, as you may remember or not know, our, with every grant that we apply for, we have to come to the commissioners at two different times. So, I always do one on everything that's a possibility, and then when, should we pick a grant to apply for, I'll come back specifically for that grant. So this is just a big overview. All right, the first one enlisted in the ad as a formula allocation program. This part, grant we get every year, and it's obvious, it's actually the one that Kristen was just talking about, that was applied, one part of it was applied to the Burton Fairgrounds, or Joga Fairgrounds. That shows I'm a, that shows I'm a Joga County resident from way back. Every year, the amount seems to shrink, and we, we always say about $200,000, but it'll probably be less than that, but I always, you know, cover myself, so I go a little high. With that, you can do anything that benefits low to moderate income households, and a community that has predominantly low income households, you can do a lot of things in that community. We have very few of those communities, so, we can also eliminate slum and blight, the typical way, the most common way that happens is with demolitions. So those are the two instances. We'll be sending out applications to our townships to apply for this grant, so they have plenty of time to start thinking about what they might want to go. Typically, they do ADA, mandated changes from the state, that says you have to have X, a certain width of doorways, your ramping, and that's typically what they apply for. So that's a formula allocation program, in a nutshell. The other one we have is the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and I'm gonna lump it with the Critical Infrastructure, because this is, these are two programs that they will let you use together with the formula program. Both of these, the Neighborhood Revitalization and the Critical Infrastructure, can max out at $300,000, and you can only use them in a community that's predominantly low to moderate income, at least 60%, like I said, very few communities in the county fall into that category, and you need a significant amount of leverage from other sources, other monies going into the project, so they can see there's investment by either that community, the commissioners, another granting agency, something. But with it, you can do a lot of things. You can fix public buildings, you can add recreation, you can fix, like, curbing and sidewalks, not necessarily roads, access, you know, the incidental part of the infrastructure, not the infrastructure, not new stack, baggage plants, or new lines, but the tie-ins, that sort of thing. So, there is a possibility that Thompson qualifies for that, but I can't go into any further detail about that, it has to be handled by someone else other than me, only because a survey was done that showed them eligible, and you have leverage. But, if that gets further talked about, it has to be somebody other than me, just so you're aware. So both that, the Neighborhood Revitalization and Critical Infrastructure, something to help a town square, a community, a community center of some sort. All right, then there's the Water and Sewer Grant. I know of no community right now that's looking at this that would be eligible for it, but just in case, we will talk about it, and I'll put it in every year, just in case something comes up that needs to be applied for. But, up to $600,000 on that, it can be used for the, for either the laying the lines, the main lines, or the actual structure, the actual plant. So, it's usually not enough to 100% anything, but it's usually coupled with a USDA grant, loan, probably both, USDA grant and loan, and then this, and then a lot of support to order high tying charges, so, typically the way that works. It's never enough to 100% the project, nor will it, will it be, even if the project's $600,000, they would never give you all the money, so. The other is the Economic Development Program. Should I not have enough funds for a CDBG revolving loan fund, loan? I can go to the state, there's all the criteria that goes along with it, you have to have the job creation, you have to do the land, the environmental review process, and everything pretty much has to be equipment, that's the easiest way to use it. That can go up to $500,000, and tied to $25,000 per job created, that will be created. Eminent, uh, let's see, the micro enterprise business development is a micro loan program, which you can ask for up to $40,000 from the state, but if you have funds in your loan program, they'll say waive the funds out of your loan program, and do this. And what those are is, a very small, under $25,000 to any one entity, it can be the whole amount that that entity needs. You don't have to use a bank in conjunction with it, and the owner sometimes doesn't have to put in any equity. You're just giving them money, and it's typically for working capital or inventory, extremely risky, but in some instances, it's the only way to get a small business started. We've looked into this in the past, and it's got a possibility, but, you know, we have a pretty good track record with our loans, and our guys are really good payers, and if you get, you know, sometimes these guys don't pay back the loans, but it's always out there. So it's a possibility, if, if I start getting a lot of people who can't get bank financing that look pretty solid, and there's something glitchy going on with the bank system, then I would say, you know, it's time to really look at the possibility of putting this program in place, because the gap's widening. But I don't see that right now. But, we're gonna include it every year, just in case. The eminent threat set aside, that's, kind of, something catastrophic happens, and usually in a community that has a dam, the dam breaks, and you just throw the money in, it's not enough to cover everything, but it's enough money to throw something on it right away. Has to be eminent threat, it can't just be, oh no, my ditch is full, it has to be, you know, safety hazard. So, we'll put it in just in case, so. And then downtown revitalization, which I keep putting in, but it's, it's a difficult one to get, mostly because a community doesn't want to impose, you have to, you have to come up with design standards. When an architect, you work with an architect, the community that wants it, works with an architect and says, we want all our houses to be Western Reserve, and everybody's gonna have to do that from now on, we want white with black shutters, and anytime you paint your house, it has to be white, or, so it's, most of our communities, that's where they pull back, 'cause they don't want to impose that. But, that's one of the key things of this, because they want a cohesive look to the downtown. So, but I put it in there just in case, pretty much, Burton has looked at it in the past, Burton Village, Sharon Village has, but it's just a, it's a tricky thing with owners, you know, they own their property, so. But, just in case something comes up, and they get everybody in a swell to change, you know, put something in place, then it's there, and I can help them apply for it. The county would count, would sign for it, but the community would be on the hook primarily. Of course, you're always on the hook ultimately, but the community would put a lot of the money into it. In, in a nutshell, that's what we got.
Well, I don't think-
Does anyone have-
This is just a-
Yeah, it's a quick overview, I can certainly give more detail to anyone who's interested.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question? I see none.
Yeah, the, the folks will come in who apply for this, there's usually seven or eight.
Yeah, well, the second one's a big deal.
And then we really get into it.
I apologize.
You'll love it, Blake.
You're gonna love it.
Pretty naive, pretty naive about this, uh-
The best is yet to come.
The public hearing about this, so I-
We're the best.
Are we good to go with that, and move on? We don't vote, or?
No, you just have to close it.
Just close that second session.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the sun is reflecting off that clock, I can't see anything, so.
And the clock isn't exactly right, it's 10:38.
Okay, we'll, we'll close the hearing at 10:38.
Well, you talked to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you say the lady's a fast talker?
I tell ya.
In the, in the good sense, not the bad sense, good sense.
You're gonna wanna say, you got two more.
Oh, I guess, oh, yes, I do. What the heck.
Okay, so this takes us to number eight.
And that's probably Kristen's.
Resignation of Kristen.
I, can I deny it?
Well, you can always try.
Well, you can deny it, but in this country, I don't think it's gonna make a big difference.
I think they leave anyway. It's about the freedom.
The esky thing.
She's very, she has great credentials, so she's very-
So she has another job.
Oh.
Step up, yeah.
She's going to Cogga County, but 30% raises.
Wow.
We're the farm team.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's ugly.
Well, that's why they're in such great shape over there.
Yeah. I tried to talk her out of it, because-
You get the money to pay that 30% increase.
Well, the, she got free parking, I mean, that was my eighth, yeah, but parking.
Oh, she got free parking down there?
No, down there?
Yeah.
Really?
She's not by the clinic, though.
Of course, she gotta walk three miles.
Yeah, she's parking by the lake.
Down by the freeway, but she'll just walk a little bit.
Dang it.
So what you're saying is, the county is kinda like, when you come here, it's kinda like a scholarship, you get trained?
Yeah, if you're young, if you're old, we're just-
Keep going on.
No, it's, it's hard, but we, she was wonderful, she really did a lot in a little bit of time in our office, and we're really grateful to her, what a sweetie, but, yeah, it's a, it's a move up.
Well, you can't falter for that.
No.
Kristi, would you, would you redate me?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board accept the resignation of Kristen Merrill, Administrative Secretary Number 14-03, to be effective February 28, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Can I hear the next one?
It's what?
Your advertisement.
Oh, yeah, now, maybe we hire someone else that will pass along with it.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of Administrative Secretary Number 14-03, the position remain posted until filled.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice take.
Fast talker.
Jumped to transit, was Kristen personally, so it's number 10.
Ten, number ten.
Yeah, we'd have to jump to it, it's next line.
We don't have to jump far.
I moved her on.
Oh, okay, because we're gonna jump from nine to, oh, we did ten.
It happens. Hi, Trey.
Come on in.
My woman is all out of whack today, so.
Yeah, I called her this morning begging, 'cause Frank and I have a drug and alcohol consortium board meeting at 11, so, I'm like, oh.
Well, you gotta, gotta hop in there.
Yeah, this is just replacing the part timer that we lost, this is the employee that was involved in the accident in the house, so we're finally, have gone through the applicants and interviewed, and we're ready to hire.
The Transit Department is requesting the board approve hiring Harry Whelan to the position of part-time driver number 2210-1 to be effective March 3, 2014, at a rate of $12.26 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $12.91 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Thanks for driving over.
I'm walking next to her.
Oh, okay.
It worked out good.
Engineer's office. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
You're on here for number 11?
Yeah, the first item is for a resolution to order for the Bainbridge Road, County Highway 11, Sections A through G improvement. Basically, this follows up with public hearing that was held on February 11, and the project is funded partially by federal highway grant money, the rest is by county road funding.
All right.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 14-034 to order the improvement of Bainbridge Road CH 11 Sections A through G in Bainbridge and Auburn Townships. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet and specifications for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
The next item's the same, just for Pettibone Road, the entire length of it, again, a resolution to order the plans, the public hearing was held on February 11. Again, this is partially funded by federal highway grant money, the rest of it remained on county road funding.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 14-035 to order the improvement of Pettibone Road CH 607 Sections A through D in Bainbridge Township. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet and specifications for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
The next item on here is for, to enact a cooperational agreement with Bainbridge Township Trustees. Bainbridge Township is approving Snyder Road Township 192 from Crackle to Taylor May. As part of that reconstruct, the county has a structure that we are also going to replace as part of it, since it's a reconstruct. The cooperative agreement allows us, or enacts us to pay for the demo of the existing structure and the replacement of the new structure, or the addition of the new structure, any remainder incidentals, earthwork, those items will be handled by Bainbridge Township. Our report is $130,000 estimated local funds, plans are still under development, but we'll be out this year.
You wanna read that?
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 14-036 of the Joga County Board Commissioners proposing to cooperate with Bainbridge Township Trustees for the improvement to Snyder Road TR 192, and in particular, the replacement of the Snyder Road Bridge, District Number 192-0.33.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Snead.
Aye.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Christine, will you be sending that to Bainbridge Township?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Takes us down to the Water Resources Number-
Nope, Sheriff's Office.
Oh, Sheriff's Office, excuse me.
Good to see you, good to see you.
Hi, Dan, how are you, sir?
Ah, thank you.
I'm gonna take it to the-
Hmm? Whatever.
Yeah.
That's later, I have it on.
Yeah, we take it to the townhouse. Okay.
Okay, I'm here today to have asked the board commissioners to sign the pre-award conditions for a technology grant we had. This is a relatively small grant, $7,600, that will be used to purchase MDTs, mobile data terminals, we're able to get two of them, for two of our cruisers. Pre-award conditions are standard conditions, so we do not discriminate, we're an equal opportunity employer, and then we'll spend the money on a proper purpose.
Okay. Yeah, the, the top one.
Keep going.
Right there.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
It's, it happens.
I'm working on getting different stickers.
Flashing stickers?
No, they're a little higher duty, so that they don't-
So flimsy that it's difficult to, for my arthritic fingers to flip them. And that's what I'm trying to, well, would you please read the-
From 14, Sheriff's 13, 14, it's here. The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the Vice President of the Board to execute the Office of Criminal Justice Services standard assurances form for the Technology Improvement Grant 2013 JGLLE 5108 as a requirement to meet pre-award conditions.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner Revere?
Aye.
Thank you.
There's one more here, Blake.
Am I missing another one?
Oh, you're bad. Too much.
Apparently, my eyes are arthritic as well. You keep blaming arthritis, but it's not arthritis that makes you miss the signature spots.
Okay.
Am I there? You know, this is kinda like when you're bad in school, and they make you write something a hundred times.
He's used to that. You could just see Blake up at the chopper.
Yeah.
Writing. I'll be good.
What's that?
I'll be good someday, someday.
So we're, we're down to fifteen, right? Which is Water Resources. Jerry? Morning.
Good morning.
Jerry?
Good morning. Items, actually, item fifteen and sixteen are service contracts for security and alarm systems with Gilmore Security. Fifteen is for all of our water facilities, and sixteen is for all of our sewer facilities. They actually provide us not only with just security, but also with alarms for our treatment systems, and that when, if there's a heavy rain or so, or pumps go down, something like that, we get the notification.
You get the notification.
There's an issue at the plant, so we can send out our guys to address it immediately, rather than like years.
That go to your cell phone?
Years ago, it was when, yeah, it would come to, it would either, it'll go, there's a sequence of who gets called.
Sure.
Goes from Jim to Dave to Mike.
Oh, that's good, that way you're, you're gonna get it, because it's always with you.
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah, so years ago, we didn't have all this, and you had to wait till the next day, and by that point, things were so bad, it took a week to get better, and now we can get back out there and get it right.
Right away.
Get started right back up, and if we need to send a truck out there to pump out a, pump out a tank, and haul up to one of our other plants, we can do that immediately.
Do the first two, fifteen, sixteen?
Yeah, if you do fifteen and sixteen together.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve initial and execute a service contract agreement with Gilmore Security Systems Incorporated to perform all maintenance service and installation of all fire and burglar alarm systems for the Judd County Water Section for the year two thousand and fourteen in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve initial and execute a service contract agreement with Gilmore Security Systems Incorporated to perform all maintenance service and installation of all fire and burglar alarm systems for the Judd County Wastewater Section for the year two thousand and fourteen in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner Revere?
Aye.
Items, actually seventeen and eighteen are standard yearly service contracts with a couple of excavators for, you know, emergency situations or so, where we need to have them be out there to dig up, dig up a sewer line or so, and then we don't have to go through the process of waiting a month to get the contract together and get them out there.
Well, that's smart.
We do, you know, we have a number of different, different contractors for different items, so that when we do have to have, have something done, and we need to use them, we still go out and get the three or four.
Best.
Yeah, the bids.
Bids.
Bids, and not technically bids, 'cause you're not.
Those quotes, yeah.
Yeah, quotes, yeah.
We get the quotes, so then we choose the, we choose them based off of the lowest, lowest.
Lowest and best, right?
So there's no, you know, we probably, in a standard year, we use maybe about fifty percent of our service contracts.
Yes, please.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Auburn Bainbridge Excavating Incorporated for excavating services as needed at various locations within Judd County for the year two thousand and fourteen in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Groundworks Construction LLC to perform general contracting services, which will include excavating, landscaping, and building maintenance for the year two thousand and fourteen in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie? Sorry, Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye. Now we're at nineteen.
Item nineteen is our Bainbridge Township two oh eight for the service areas for where sewers are, where sewers can go in the future, and where, you know, that it's gonna remain on, on lot systems. When we were going through our most recent update, adding per approvals that were done back in, I think, September or October of last year, adding the Voproco property, and then mending one of the other properties on Bainbridge Road from a maybe sewer to an actual, because, to a sewer, because they did tie in. Now, I noticed going through that there were several properties that were misrepresented on the map, that they were either, they were either in a existing sewer area, but didn't have sewer service, they were in the, there was a couple in the, in the on-lot systems that actually had sewer. All of this, I wanted to amend that.
To include those?
To make it correct and accurate, because the EPA actually uses those charts, or uses those maps for determining when somebody submits a plan to them to have sewer. They use those to verify whether they can have sewer, or whether it's not. The township has approved them. The one thing to note is that all of these areas that were amended, if they, if they went to, to be, to have sewer, all those sewer systems, all those sewer services, were actually in place prior to the original two oh eight for Bainbridge Township being put together, so there wasn't any, it was just a matter, they somehow got missed back then, you know, ten years ago, twelve years ago, when that was done. At that time, the, well, they're actually still a planning commission mishandling those, so I don't know if there was our department that didn't give them all the proper locations to have the sewer, or if they just didn't get put on the map.
Slipped through the cracks, yeah.
With planning, so.
But they were sewered.
But they were sewered prior to the, the initial two oh eight being drafted back in, I don't remember some of the dates, the dates on there, but the first one, back in two thousand and seven, or two, actually, no, two thousand and four.
Thank you.
So there's just updating it with, you know, several lots that changed.
Thank you for reading this.
The Department, the Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and accept the amendment for thirty-six parcels to maybe sewer designation, eleven parcels from maybe sewer to existing sewers designation, and five parcels from no service to existing services, existing sewers designation, revising the Bainbridge Township two oh eight service area plan.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey.
Number twenty here is looking to do RFP, a request for proposals, for and from engineering firms to do a modeling and a master plan for our Bainbridge water system. The Bainbridge water system was, has been designed, constructed, and put in place mostly based off of a emergency and/or lawsuit basis. There's never been any real plan for how that system was gonna work out. So it started, I think, back with the Canyon Lakes, that, that lawsuit that was, what, thirty years ago now, probably, and then at different points, we, you know, it was expanded up into Noel's Industrial Park, because they were having water issues, and it was expanded to the intersection of Washington and three oh six because of water issues, and then it got expanded to Bainbridge Road based on the, the gas well, the house explosion down there and the gas well issue.
All right.
So that, you know, the water systems kind of never really had a official master plan, how it would work, how it would be designed. We, I do know there's, you know, there's a couple areas where we need to have the water line looped.
Yeah, closed loop, right.
Close the loop, so that we have a second access. Bainbridge Road is an example. If something ever were to happen to our water line on Bainbridge, close to the Canyon Woods subdivision, our customers that are on Scotland, English, Kingswood, Kenston Lake, would all be without water until that water.
You're looking at bringing water from north as a freeway, you know, close loop from outside.
Correct, how we would bring that back. The other one is, you know, the, the line we have up through the valley between Chagrin Road and Noel's Industrial Park is our only service up into that area. We have a tower up in that area.
Oh, right.
Which holds about five hundred thousand gallons of water, which is enough for one day.
Oh.
But if some, you know, for our customers that are up there, if for some reason something happened to that, and we weren't able to get to it in a timely fashion.
They'd be without water.
Or we have a situation like we had back in.
English Drive?
November, no, back in October or November, where we, we issued, had car hit the hydrant.
Hydrant.
And before we were able to get guys out there to shut the valves off, that, that.
Empty tower.
Tower was, was drained, because it, it was, it was a, it was the, you know, the worst-case scenario, that, that car hit that hydrant at the lowest part, lowest point in that system, so everything went down. But if it had a high point, it would've been great, because all the water would've stayed in the system and stuff for that area.
But the low point.
But he hit it in a low point, so we wanna get, bring somebody, bring in an engineering firm in to actually do complete modeling of the system, make sure what we have currently is valid and, and work for process, for, for providing our customers with the service that they, they deserve, as well as to model, or to look at master planning, how we need to move forward with providing second services, where we could, and South Russell had brought up a request recently to possibly extend that water line up into the village, and to the, to Gurnee School, and to development that, for their nursing home facility that they're, that somebody's looking at. The village had approached us, but we weren't, we're not able to provide that service right now, because of what we have right now. We don't have the capacity to then, to provide the pressure up in that area.
See, in the west end of South Russell there, that's Chagrin water extension.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. That was, that's one of the things, when, when South Russell approached us and asked us about it, that we were kinda thinking, that's not a bad deal, because at that point, we would be, if we got it to Gurnee School, we're about a, a little less than a mile, a three-quarters of a mile, from Chagrin's water system.
Right.
At that point, we could then, at some point, possibly extend that water line as a trunk, or as a service line, to the Chagrin system.
So you have a lever to switch the lever.
We wouldn't be pulling water from Chagrin, because their pressures would be lower than ours, but if for some reason we ever lost pressure, then we could pull.
Draw from it, don't you?
Yeah, you can have like, okay, not Chagrin, yeah.
It would give us that, it would give us that true second source of, of water in case of emergency.
That's a good idea.
Please read.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board authorize the Department to begin the request for proposal RFP process for engineering firms to provide water system modeling and water system master planning for the county's Bainbridge Township water system.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner Revere?
Aye.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Administrative Secretary Number thirteen zero five. This position will remain posted until filled.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner Revere?
Aye. Number twenty-two is.
Resolution.
Yeah, the resolution, you wanna read that?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number fourteen dash zero three seven honoring leadership Jugga two thousand and fourteen Emerald Leader Award winner Daniel C. McClelland.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sweetie?
Aye.
Commissioner Revere?
Aye. That takes us to the end of the agenda, and I believe Mr. Claypool had wanted to address an issue, and.
Yes.
If you have, yeah, this is the time to do it, okay?
Yeah, there was two, two things that came up in the last, in the lack of the policy board that I sat on. The first was the one that Mary mentioned, and I'm happy to hear that Mary was opposing that. I actually got a call.
Opposing both.
Yeah, well, we'll see about the second, but the, there are two, there's two aspects to the one issue having to do with our roads. It's, I got a long, I had a long conversation with Steve Handley out of Medina. I raised the issue in the meeting, he supported me in that, as did Jim Gills from Lake County, the county engineer, and so there seems to be, or there appears to be some support opposing the proposal that NOAACA is making, and I'll explain that to you in a minute. Joe Cutel is actually meeting this morning with Medina's county engineer to.
Like Salay.
To understand this better, and understand from NOAACA what's going on. But I'll give you the best explanation I have, and I actually have documentation with me, if anybody's interested in seeing the documentation on it. But there is a process whereby NOAACA wants to take out two thirty-million-dollar loans, thirty million dollars for the next two years, that's sixty-million-dollar loan, which has not been done before. This is a whole new thing. It takes advantage of a revolving loan program, program that exists in Columbus for the purpose of large-scale projects, but it's not been used on road maintenance before. It's a little bit like taking, you know, going grocery shopping on your credit card. So you eat up all the food next week, you gotta buy more food, but you gotta be in the food that you have already eaten. And so I raised that issue, and NOAACA did not give detailed information. There was a lot of, I like, I feel, we need to take care of our roads kind of stuff, but there was no detailed explanation about how the money would be used, where it would be used, what the cost projections were gonna be, what the payback projections were gonna be, and as Mary Appleby said, there is no guarantee of future income. You know, things change. We're operating on a continuance right now at the federal level, and so there is no guarantee of future federal income, so it puts us at risk. If we take out this loan, that's an opportunity for a future liability, we may not be able to pay back. That's one aspect to that new road program that they wanna put together. The second aspect to that is, they wanna change the gradation or the metric system whereby they decide which roads to work on.
Right.
And, and the issue in that is, they have the scale process, which says we're gonna work on the worst roads. Well, for those of us, Jugga County, Medina County, Lake County, who have been responsible, we've taken care of our roads, and so on and so forth, we haven't printed away money on, on other things.
Worth the sidewalks.
Yeah, then, you know, so.
Our level, our, our, our rating is higher for our roads.
That's right. It appears that Kihooga County is trying to rig the system in their favor to take out a loan, which by the way.
Ahead of time.
Which by the way, we would be encumbered to help pay back, because there's a, another aspect in the document, that they have the policy document, is a cost-sharing aspect. So you're seeing that the approval in the executive committee, and that's the next step, I misunderstood, I was kinda caught off guard a little bit, in a switch in, in boards that I was gonna sit on, so I didn't get a chance to really study this prior to going into the meeting, but there are policy statements that if we approve this in executive session, that's the next place to stop it, so it goes to executive session, then it goes to the board. In the executive session, we have an opportunity, because of the, the voting structure there, we have more votes, or potential votes, to vote against it, and so we could potentially stop it in the executive session, as was explained to me by Stephen.
Or, or change, you know, the standards, and I chair that committee, and that is, you know, where we intend to stop it.
Well, and I, and I hope we do. I'd like to see.
We'll try.
A resolution that strongly opposes it. I would, I would like to oppose the whole concept of the loan program. I think the loan program for fixing our roads is foolish, and, and does not, it shows fiscal irresponsibility, in my opinion. Now, that's just my opinion, and, you know, we can do what we need to do.
Well, I don't think any of us like the idea of taking money out two years in advance, and then have to pay it back. I mean, when does it end? You keep going two years, the next two years, the next two years, and then you end up with the mess we got at the federal government.
On the face of it, this, that particular program, doesn't smell right, does it pass the smell test?
Yeah, it looks, uh.
No.
Seems like on the surface to me, because I don't, you know, I missed that meeting because of a prior engagement, but the, the whole thing seems to reward people for doing poor jobs.
Well, and it does.
Well.
I mean, it, it's like if you, if Kihooga County or, or whomever is negligent in staying on top of all these infrastructure issues, or has been negligent, well, then all of a sudden, we're gonna give them a pass and take a bunch of money out.
Right.
To, to get their.
And, you know, they call it creative financing, but we know what creative financing has done in the housing market, don't we? I mean, that's, that's, that was a fiasco. We don't need to.
Sure is a lot of creative financing. Document onto you, I received it, and it's available electronically, but in here, there's some things that, that generally speaking, I would like to hear your thoughts on, and on where you would stand on it, and I'll read one of the objectives. This is a goals and objective thing, which we're gonna vote on. These are the policies.
Well, it has to pass the executive committee first. You know, you gotta go through these committees, and I don't like the idea that, that they would be changing the standards to allow, I mean, our standards are high, and I talked about where our road, we have our roads up around ninety and eighty, and Cleveland doesn't fix them till they're at sixty. That's where ODOT is, at sixty, and there's no point, if we don't get our money, because we wanna fix our roads at eighty, we need to be able to get them.
Sixty, eighty, and ninety is a.
It's a level.
It's a grading system.
It's a grading system on the roads.
Something to.
Right.
Well, that's, that's the, that's this thing here called the transportation policy, transportation asset policy. There's a whole nother set of policies.
Yeah, that was emailed to you.
I have some concerns, and I raised it in the meeting, having to do with promoting cost sharing, that is, us sharing our funds with other counties. That is us sharing our funds with other counties and so forth. And I, and I, yeah, I think we'll lose in that vote. I think we should oppose it on merit and send a strong message that we oppose it.
Yeah, I mean, we cost share enough.
About, there is one other very significant thing which is buried in this policy document, and that is that NAWACA will agree to and, and inculcate or bake into all the policies within NAWACA, the NEOCC, VIBRANT NEO two thousand forty plans. And so in here they say, and it is in every policy statement, NAWACA will work to promote and adopt the strategies identified in VIBRANT two, and I will tell you that Jogger County is not well-served by this plan. We never participated in it.
No.
We didn't, um, have any, you know, we, we, but we've never opposed it. I'd love to see a resolution opposing VIBRANT. I'm gonna go to their board meeting this afternoon. It's at one o'clock down in Akron. And I'm, as a citizen, I'm going to oppose it. There's a number of citizens who are gonna show, show up there and we're gonna oppose what they're doing. Not that we oppose regional planning, but that we oppose their approach to regional planning because it, um, does not, it represents, it's representative of the federal government coming in opposing their view on our, and it is Jogger County, which all of the policies are built around Jogger County, um...
We have a different mindset.
Needs and their interest.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at their documents, and I can show you all kinds of documents that they've published, one of their documents lists, and I have it actually on my laptop if you're interested in seeing it, it shows Jogger County as a first ring, second ring suburb of Cuyahoga County. NAWACA refers to us as Greater Cleveland, not Jogger County, Greater Cleveland. And so their view of our future is that we will be their park system. They wanna triple the amount of parks in Jogger County. It is published, easy to verify, don't believe me, go verify their documents, their presentation. Uh, and again, I have their slides on my laptop, and I'd love to show it to you so that we could build support for opposing what they're doing. At, at the very least, there should be a public scrutiny, there, there should be some vetting of what they've done to say, okay, this is good, this is not good. NAWACA has never allowed it, and Mary, you know that I pressed as hard as I could press to, if nothing more, allow a public scrutiny.
Vetted, right.
Let's bring out the data, let's bring out the assumptions, let's bring out, and let's have a discussion about it. If we're gonna pass something that's gonna have a multimillion dollar impact on our citizens.
Well, we did not go along with the NOSK. We did not do that in Jogger County. We did not meet with them. We did, we kicked them out of our county.
We've never pushed that, and Mary, you've got a unique position. You're the president of the board.
Oh, I know, I intended to.
Okay, we can have a public vetting of what they've done, and let me tell you something, it will not hold muster because the data, the process, the methodology, um, is weak, and yet they will force this through the system because nobody is opposing them. And so I, I would ask that we, at least in this board...
Vetted, right.
We look at what they're doing, and I would, um...
We certainly can do plenty at the executive level, and we could put, we can go through, you know, the problem is before, you know, whoever was running, putting the agenda together with the president of the board, it's a little different right now.
Well, yeah, she was Cuyahoga County.
Right, exactly.
And fact is, that's another concern that I'll raise while I've got the floor here. Right now, the Public Affairs, um, Commission within NAWACA is made up of three or four individuals of all Cuyahoga County.
Were you talking about the external affairs?
The, the folks that set up the relationship with what we're going to lobby for and to communicate.
I am president of that. I am the chairman of that board. I took her off of it.
I didn't see, I didn't see the name on that, maybe.
No, I took her off of it.
Oh, did you?
Oh, I changed that.
I didn't see, 'cause I saw that published, and then the value in the call is what I saw.
That's why I changed everything around to, you know, so that we had more, more teeth in there. That's why...
There was no representation, limited representation.
No, oh, I changed that.
Good, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a fight, but...
So if you, if you'd be open to it, I'd love to have, you know, to have an opportunity, I mean, I would love to do it quietly so we're not imposing this on the public.
Well, I think, I think, get, get your, 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 um, points together, give them to me, if you would. Put your points together.
Yeah, I can do that.
And I have, I know Joe, I've talked with Joe, I've sat down with Grace about it, I made it real clear. If we don't get our road and bridge money at, at the level that we anticipate, at the level that we have done for the last ten years, there's no point us being there.
Well, that's, that's the one thing.
That was my feeling.
NAWACA scares me worse. I mean, this loan program, that's bad.
Well, it's five counties in the city of Cleveland, so...
The NEOCC scares me.
Yeah, well, I agree, and we kicked them out of the Family First meeting.
They're there, but, and, and this policy statement says they will bake those recommendations into...
Well, that has to get changed.
Into everything we do in NAWACA. If that happens, we won't have any vote on it. It will become part of the policy, and that policy will be rolled out, and we won't have any vote on it because of the policy.
Well, we need to push back.
Well, is there...
I agree.
An advantage to, uh, I mean, I have no problem with a resolution, but oftentimes a resolution is, well, it, it, sometimes I, I term it as a feel-good exercise for the people who pass them.
Right.
That we've, we've done something where I'd rather, you know, I don't mind doing that, uh, but, but we need to, to have something with teeth that, that expresses to...
Well...
Others that we have some serious concerns as a board, as a commissioner.
And I need, I need all those issues, and what I'm saying is, when we go to the executive meeting, this is where you can stop it because it has to go through the executive committee to get to the board in the first place. And on that board, we have Jim Gills, Mike, well, Mike Salee isn't on there, but Adam Frederick is, 'cause Steve Handley is no longer on the executive board. So there are quite a few, like you say, we have more votes there, and I think that that's where it has to be cut off at the pass, especially the regulations, what's being put into the policy and all those things.
But if, if...
We need to...
We could sign something of, uh, uh, here at Jogger County...
Yeah, we could.
That, that, that holds all of our feet to the fire as far as our, our, our issue, issues meant, you know, this is how we feel about an issue. Is there a, uh, a greater...
I, I think there's two things that can be done, I'm sorry to interrupt you, like, Lorraine County Trustees Association just passed a resolution opposing anything that NEOCC is going to do.
Well, we can use that.
And so as the county commissioners in Jogger County, you have the ability to go to the Township Trustees Association.
And get them to oppose.
And, and I'm probably the best prepared because I've studied this for a couple of years now, to make a presentation, show them what these guys are doing. And if we, as Jogger County, oppose what they're doing, that's gonna send a strong message to them.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do, is to, to, twofold. One, you send a very strong message. Two, you also get a commitment from elected officials that, in a, in a sense, it holds their feet to the fire in, in future, uh, discussions, that, you know, you, you were opposed to it then and, you know. I, I voted for it before I voted against it, or against it before I voted for it, whatever that famous line is, you know.
Very few people understand what's inside of this. Very few people. Again, I've, I've spent enormous amount of time looking at this.
Well, we can also have a presentation.
What?
At the meeting.
Whatever you guys think. I'm raising the issue to start the, the, start the dialogue and the discussion. You guys are at the table, you're sitting there with the responsibility.
Yeah, we're short one right now, but I'm, I'm, you know, we would not do anything, obviously, without our house presence.
Well, we don't have, we don't have, um, I'm saying the executive committee, no, Jim Gills is no longer, and we had Dan Troy and, uh, Awful Dish, and, uh, we got Ted Kalow, and I'm just thinking who would go with us. I know Valerie.
Valerie would not.
No.
I mean, I'm pretty familiar with these two of the senators.
And then you figure, you know, Nate isn't going to, 'cause that's Ed Fitzgerald's guy, and, uh...
May not want to have one record with all of us.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure who's on the execu, I know who's on it. Well, Adam Fredericks is Steve Handley, but he's, certainly Steve is, we'll work this out.
Yeah, Skip, your point is well-taken. Thank you.
And, and, and I know what you're talking about because I've been on the phone constantly about it and talking to everyone about it, but my big issue, obviously, is, you know, the, 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 the level, the ratings of roads. I, I'm not for taking money ahead of time, and I certainly don't nod the NOSK policies embedded in what everything we do, especially when we kicked them out of our county at the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's almost as though, uh...
I mean, I, I have not changed.
They wanna annex us because of our wallet.
No, it's, it, what it is is, you know, they're worried about their infrastructure. They've, they've gone down from a million people in, in, you know, the city of Cleve, they're down to like four, under four hundred thousand right now. They're at three ninety-eight. And there's the issue of East Cleveland. East Cleveland can't even get anyone to come and plow their roads, and they need to be annexed into Cleveland. If they annex them into Cleveland, that'll give them twenty, twenty-seven thousand more people, which would bring them up over four hundred thousand, which then will put them in line for federal cash. So whether they do that or not is, is, is a question because there's some kind of codicil on, on, on the, on the Forest Hills properties that, um, that was put in place by the Rockefellers to take care of the park, and that's connected to Cleveland Heights. Cleveland Heights wants no part of taking East Cleveland, but then you've got that Forest Hills portion there. There's something weird there, and, but I think Jackson wants to help East Cleveland, but it's a big buy.
Well, I, I don't mind.
But there's weird things going on there, I know right now.
But you, you know, Mary, 'cause I, I brought this over two years ago.
I know, I know.
I saw where this was going two years ago.
Right.
And, um, if you look at what NEOCC's plan is, and it started with their grant application.
Right.
Their grant application said...
And they did get the grant, they get the budget.
Their intent is to spread the wealth. That's what they said to HUG when they took the money. They said, "Our purpose is to spread the wealth, to take money from the more lucrative, the more wealthy communities."
Like Medina, Jogger, like...
And spread that into Cuyahoga County. They're, they're all about, what, what Mary said was true.
Exactly.
That is, they have this, um, concept that people have flee, they flew out of Cleveland into the suburbs...
Urban sprawl.
Taking their money with them, so we're the problem, 'cause we took our money out of Cleveland, which is not true necessarily. And so they're all of us abandonment, and they don't tie that abandonment, all the issues they've got in Cleveland with their stupid decision. I'm sorry for saying it that way.
With their foolish decisions.
Right.
And so they're not tying policies.
Well, they feel Jogger County has sucked out the wealth.
That's right. And so what their intent is...
I mean, that's their exact words.
Is to pull, to pull more population back into Cuyahoga County to create a mechanism in the scenario whereby we can...
Through coercion.
Yeah, through coercion, not through, you know, if they, if they improve the environment, there'll be a lot of people who wanna live in Cleveland.
Exactly.
Well, I think it's about safety, a lot about safety, and, and what happened in East Cleveland when they had that, you know, blocked that, Isaac Hayes who went house to house and sold homes with the fear of what was going to happen in the community, and now it's ninety-three percent poor, they have no money to even make payroll. I mean, this is what, you don't want your community become all one way. You want it to be a homogenous group of people who can sustain what's going on in the community. And we have that problem, and that's what's happening to Cleveland. Same thing is happening.
But you have to govern in such a way that productive members of society wanna be there.
It's a problem.
Because they voted with their feet and they've left because they don't like the way that entity's been governed. So they exercise their right as free Americans to move somewhere where the government is more responsible.
I really do believe we're on the same page, and I think...
Well, I hope so.
Yeah, oh, we have a...
I hope so, and I'd love to see us send a very strong...
Message.
Resolution, a message, whatever, to go into the executive committee, and I'll be at the next executive committee, um, and at the very least, minimally, um, we have to ask them to defend what they're doing, to show in detail what it is that their plans are and to defend that, and allow somebody to, 'cause they never allowed anybody to question it. I mean, you know that I, the police are calling me when I start trying to question things in, in workshops. They don't want people questioning what they're doing.
Well, it's not the question, it's the way in which it's questioned.
What's that?
It's not the question, it's the way in which it's questioned. It's not the question.
Sometimes it's not.
It's the, it's the method.
Yeah, sometimes it's not the message, it's the messenger.
If there is no mechanism to allow for questions, sometimes you have to interrupt to get the question started, to get a discussion started. And so they, they have so orchestrated and so structured their workshops, never to allow any, any, um...
Well, you obviously had no problems talking at the workshop.
Oh, I did.